Grimes County, Texas. It is the first day of October. Good grief. And we're at the Grimes County Annex Building 114, West Buffington Avenue, Anderson, Texas. First item on the agenda is called "The Meeting to Order." Second item on the agenda is "Discuss and Take Action to Approve Merit Raise Process for Department Heads and Their Employees." I've already heard that everybody's just excited to be here this morning. Cherie, did you get that emergency agenda put out for the 3:00 meeting for tomorrow?
Yes, I did.
Okay, alright. Just teasing.
Are you gonna be here?
You think you're tired of looking at me now? Way, just way.
We're the emergency.
Okay. Appreciate everybody being here. And the reason I called for this special meeting is for us as a court to have some discussion, engage HR, and all of us be in line because we're doing merit increases this year, which is different, of course, than the two previous years where we've done an across-the-board COLA increase. The merit increases applied can apply to all employees within the county with the exception of elected officials. No elected official merit money or COLA money was put into the budget, so we're only dealing with department heads and their employees in the distribution of these merit monies. So we have, I believe each of you have a fresh copy from HR of the "Merit Raises Based on Employee Performance Evaluations," item number six of that.
Can I ask you something?
Yes, you may.
That you just said, you said merit money and COLA money.
No, there's only merit money.
Okay.
Because we've done COLA in the last two years. This year, we took a 2% pool, but it was to be distributed as merit money. Now, if a department head, and this is part of the discussion, but if a department head said, "All of my employees deserve 2%," I'm giving it to them across the board, that's their call, so...
I just wanted to be sure. I heard you correct.
There's not a merit pool and a COLA pool, only a merit pool, and that was put together on the basis of a 2% of a department's payroll excluding elected officials. Did I say that pretty right, Jesse?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So on this item six in the policy manual on page 72, the one that Toledo shared with it, I'm just gonna read it to get us up to date to what our policy currently says. It says eligibility. "The Commissioners Court has approved the position pay grade scale attached as Exhibit A, and no raises will be granted that would exceed the salary set forth therein. In order to be eligible for merit raise, an employee performance evaluation must be submitted to the county judge and approved by the Commissioners Court. Employee performance evaluations shall be completed on the form approved by the Commissioners Court and submitted to the county judge by the employees elected, appointed official or department head prior to the filing of the annual proposed budget. Three, no proposed merit raise will be effective unless approved by the Commissioners Court during the annual budget process. And then four, IV four, performance will be given, excuse me, preference will be given to proposed pay increases for employees below the minimum specified pay range for those proposed raises for individuals within a specified pay range of that position." To my knowledge, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Toledo, but I don't believe we have any employee currently that is below the minimum of their pay grade. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So everybody in that respect could be considered. However, if somebody is at the very top of their pay grade, and we wanted to give them an increase, and it took them above that salary amount, that would not be acceptable according to our policy. The avenue for resolving that would be to review the job description, which is a February-May activity. We would review that and then reevaluate the position via HR's input and do a comparison with other same or similar jobs throughout the county and say, "Yes, it probably does need to be moved up," or "No, it's positioned where it's at, and that person or that individual might be considered as at the top of the grade." I'm gonna, I'd open this up for comments, but I just wanna share one comment that I have, that through this section six, I think county judge is mentioned far too many times. And the reason I say that I'm not in a position on a day-to-day basis or month-to-month to really evaluate some department head's employees. I don't, I don't feel that's, I don't, that's not my position as a county judge to be doing that. That's the position of the department head, to be evaluating their employees. I don't have a problem with myself and the rest of the court, like we've done in the past, evaluating department heads, because you may be the liaison to the department head, but effectively, they report to Commissioners Court in hold. So I don't have a problem or an issue with the court evaluating department heads. I think that's appropriate. But for me to be involved in a department head's individual evaluations, unless they need some schooling or training on how to do it, or, you know, go through the process, I'm glad to do that.
Well, I kinda read that a little bit different.
Okay, please share your thoughts.
It said, now, what I'm seeing, or what I interpreted to say is, "Employee performance evaluation shall be completed on the form approved by the Commissioners Court and submitted to the judge." So who's doing the completion of the form? Would be the department head.
That is correct.
And then they're just turning it into you as a checkmark to say, you know, the department head did what they were supposed to do. Because if I remember, we had a problem with a department head not doing the employee's evaluation our first year.
Yeah.
And so in order to make up for our, having a knowledge, knowing that they did do it, they would do it and submit it to you, because one year we had someone that didn't do the department, and they weren't eligible for any raises because the department head didn't do that or the elected official. This is just a way of knowing that they did it.
And at that, at that time, if I may, Judge?
Sure.
I think Judge Lamont said, "We'll just have them turn them into me, and then I'll disseminate them to everybody on the court." That's why that was put in there, I believe, if I remember correctly.
That wasn't the intent.
Yeah.
And if that was his plan, that's fine, but now he's gone. So I, I would rather, and I'd rather put this burden on Toledo.
Well, it kinda does anyway, so my understanding is that they all come into the HR office. I think the deadline was April 30th. Lucy would take them all, she would compile them by department and do an overall checklist, scorecard, if you will.
Kind of a summary sheet.
And I think that's what was given to the Commissioners Court. Judge, I think you were the only one that might have done another, I don't think you got all the performance evaluations, did you?
I don't think I did.
Yeah, you just got the evaluation sheets. And that was just so the court would be aware that, yes, the department heads or elected officials did what they were supposed to do if you all were going to do merit raises.
And I agree.
Or it's part of stipulation.
I agree too, that they should be in HR, because that's where they, they should be kept, in HR.
And they are.
And those are personnel records.
Yes.
So...
And she would send that out, that packet out with all the evaluations in them, and then, you know, we could review them.
Commissioners, did each of you get one, did you each one get one of these?
A new, a new one?
Yes, we got those.
Yes.
I guess, I mean, it's, it's, this one's dated 5/15/20, so...
Yeah, they just amended, I think, we just, that's the policy?
No, no, that's...
No, 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 this is not...
No, I think you were the only one that was provided a binder, because it says that it should be turned into you and presented to the court.
Okay. So I'm the only one that got the benefit of this?
Correct.
I got a red binder as well.
Well, the red binder is also your personnel manual. They, you probably should have selected a different color binder.
So I, I find this interesting reading, okay? But again, I don't, I don't want me, or even the next county judge, to be the decision-maker on who gets increases and who doesn't get increases. If it's the idea of just making sure our department heads are compliant, I don't have a problem with that, although I think that that would be something that all of the court should be involved in, not just the county judge. Thoughts?
Well, it did say approved by the Commissioners Court.
You know, I read the policy, and I was thinking, why do we submit those, or why was the policy written this way? And I noticed that in 6A2, the last sentence says, "They're to be submitted to you, Judge, prior to the annual proposed budget." And I'm just wondering, are they submitted to you so that you can look at them and determine, because it's, you're gonna be preparing the initial budget-
Right.
-to determine how many, how much money may be needed for raises? I don't know.
And, and I had that same thought, and thought along the lines of, well, I didn't do it very, for this year, I didn't do a very good job, other than saying to Jesse early on, "Let's put together some numbers for a 2% pool for merit pool." That was just to give us a number as a court to work with. But as far, Commissioner Cox, as far as going through and seeing what the recommendation was from each department head or elected official, I didn't make a tabulation of that.
That would be hard to do for you, looking at different department heads, I would think, to determine, you know, how much are they, how much are they worth, you know, giving each ra, each person in that department for raises.
And, and I, I can't speak on behalf of Ben Lamont, but I know that he was trying to work, because I was involved as a citizen, helping put the salary schedule together, the grades, and get all of that evaluated, so that we could get people paid properly and people that were below the minimum to get them up-
Yes.
...to at least what we felt like the job was worth. So I, you know, I don't think he was picking winners and losers. I think he was just looking for consistency in how the money was being distributed and getting people to the proper levels. That would have been, that was my understanding when he and I had conversation. However, that was starting to be a long time ago, so...
Well, like I said, overall, I just think it was just to make sure that department heads and elected officials were doing what they were supposed to, so that their employees would not be left out in the cold. Because based upon the, the policy, they could not receive the compensation or the merit rate unless the evaluation was done.
Right, yeah. And then going through, I don't, I just, I guess you're where I don't have all the evaluations and what have you of the summary sheets, so...
My, Lucy did all of that-
Right, no, I understand.
-prior to me coming in. I know she did mention that there was either some late arrivals after the cutoff time, or there was some departments that didn't submit performance evaluations, which is gonna pose a problem if they're gonna try to give their employees, and we don't have our current evaluation on file, then we're gonna be going against policy. So it's gonna, when the, when the status change forms come in, I'm gonna have to go through each employee and verify the amount of raise that the department head or elected official wants to give them, and I'm gonna have to verify to make sure that they're gonna fall within the pay grade scale. And then I'm gonna have to make sure that they have a current performance evaluation on file before we can approve.
Well, I would, I would hope that our department heads are student up in the area of math, that if they did suggest a merit increase in amount for an employee, that they would know that it fits within that salary grade.
I would think so, but they still have to be verified.
Yeah, no, it's, we still need to have a checkoff. Jesse, time-wise, and I know you're, you're not speaking for the Treasurers Department, but I'll ask you, do you know when this, these forms need to be completed? Toledo, do you know when these forms-
They need to have them by next Tuesday, October 6th, because Senda will open up payroll on either Wednesday or Thursday.
Okay.
And she'll start opening it. Once she opens up payroll, anytime I go in and make a change to an employee, she has to physically get up and come down to my office and enter in the password. So I try to get all the changes in prior to her opening it up. So they would need to be in my office by October 6th.
And October 6th is what day?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
We also have to have time for our office to verify that.
Right, that's what I'm saying, the latest would be October 6th.
Now, the wor, the sky doesn't come tumbling down if the paperwork's not in in time for those employees to get that merit increase, starting with the first paper. They could start their merit increase on the second paper, or you could start it in November.
Correct. But if they wanted to start for the first day in October, I have to have them in.
Okay.
But then that's gonna put extra money in there.
I was under the understanding that it was beginning October 1st, and that's when it-
No, and I, and I get that, Jesse, I understand that. But in the event we're not through with the paperwork process by October the 6th, my point is, the ones that would pay the penalty would be the employee, because they're not getting their merit increase on their first October paycheck. I can't tell if you're smiling or frowning with your mask, but...
I can't.
And I'm not, and I'm not looking to penalize any of our employees. What I am trying to figure out, or trying to make sure, is that we have time to get all of this done. And the question is, I don't know.
Well, I got a question. So if it's a merit increase or merit pay, and it's based on performance, does it all have to be given out at one time? If you have an area that needs improvement, you're not wanting to withhold a raise completely, but you say, "I want, a department head or elected official says, 'I'm gonna give you 1% in October, but I'm gonna hold on to the other 1% because I wanna see the improvement by March, and if you've improved enough, I will give you another 1%." Is that not permissible?
Well, in the, in the business world, we did that all the time. In the government world, I'm not sure how that works.
So we had the policy where it stated that even with the new hires, that you could hire on at a lesser rate and then give them, you know, an increase as you, but then that policy was changed, and it was, you get it at-
Well, by golly, who did that?
Um, that policy was changed, and it was, you get it at the beginning of the fiscal year.
The merit raise?
Just an increase in, in general, because y'all, I don't have the policy in front of me, but...
So let me ask you another question, and this has been posed to me. What if I wanna give one of my employees a 1.5% raise? It's my understanding, let me just clarify, if from my seat, I understood the court to grant a 2% maximum increase merit raise per employee?
No.
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 2% pool for department, you give a 4, or you give a 1, you give a 1.5%?
Okay. That clarifies it.
Yeah. And the reason I said a 2% pool is so that the auditors could give us a budget number to work with.
Yeah.
I think departments will be able to meet the deadline of next Tuesday, and we'll work, we'll work with them to get that.
I, I do have, I have a question, and I'm not sure how to put it into words. If a, I don't wanna complicate this, but let me, Kat Lee has a lot of people, and she effectively is a department head over different department numbers, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So if she has the pool for all of those department numbers, but she uses that pool or that money in one area, I guess the question is, she doesn't, does she have to keep the 2% out of this department separate from the 2% out of this department, out of the 2% separate out of that department? Or can she take all of the money and put it in one department head pool and say, "Okay, I'm not giving any raises over here, but I'm gonna give some raises here, and I'm gonna give some raises there." Do they have that latitude?
You approve the budget with the merit raise in that department. That, that is the, the 2% in each department. That's how the budget was approved.
Okay, so if they don't use the 2% in that department, then that just rolls over into fund balance eventually?
Yes, so to speak, yes.
Is designated only for that particular-
Yes.
-department that it's put in?
That's how the budget was adopted, yes.
Yes, and if it were to be moved to any other department, it would have to be a budget amendment, because it's coming out, well, is it still in the same-
You're, you're still, your overall budget, your number stays the same.
Right.
We are just moving it from one line to another, and so-
But does it move from department to department?
It will be. It'll come before court, yes.
Yes, you will see it.
So it can be done.
But not without the court's knowledge.
Well, that's okay. But I mean, that's what I'm getting at, that gives that department head latitude, how to best use that money versus being forced to either, because they might have two people in this department, and they think those two people are doing a, a good job, but the rate of pay that they're receiving is adequate for the job that they're doing. And somebody over here is doing just an excellent job, so I wanna give them a 4% or a 5% increase, and that keeps them still within the range, so they have the latitude to do that.
Is that what we intended?
Well, I don't know. That's why we're having this discussion today, because I wanna make-
Hey, my, they need more money or something, then that, you would, you know, I think each department, even though we have, you know, department head over multiple departments, I think we need to keep them separate.
Yeah, that's what my thought, intention is.
Yeah, that would get, yeah, that could be, yeah.
So in, in theory, a department head or elected official could choose to give one employee an 8% raise and another employee a 1% raise, and the 8% takes that employee outside of what their salary skill says without-
No.
No.
You can't not do that.
No.
Well, who's gonna stop them?
We are.
HR and then our office. It comes through, yes.
That's the rule.
Yeah, I see what it says.
It's the policy.
That's where the verifying comes in.
Okay.
And that's where the auditors audit, and that's where the HR reviews.
Okay.
But to be, go back to his point, excuse me, I'm sorry.
I, I think, I think the department head should have the ability to move that money if they feel like it, because they are over those departments, they are working with those people. From my personal experience in, in evaluating people in the past, I would do that if I had the opportunity to do that. The purpose of us giving merit raises is to keep the good people that we have, and I'm not saying we're trying to get rid of people, but that's the purpose that we put this in place, is to maintain the people that we have, and we were losing them in the Sheriff's Department and Road and Bridge when I took office, left and right, because we would train them, and they would be gone, making more money, so...
And we've rectified that a little bit, but we're still running to that problem.
We're still, we're still, still losing people, but not to the extent that we were before.
Again, Commissioners, I'm not trying to make this more confusing, I'm just trying to get everybody on the same page. Commissioner Walker?
Okay. I hear what you're saying, I hear what you're saying, but I, I need to, I guess, think it through as to, okay, if I'm an employee, and I'm over in this department, and she has two other departments, and I feel like I'm, do a merit, merit raise, but then you take all of the money out of this department and put it over there, that would make me feel some kind of way, you know?
Well, but see, that's where the department head comes in with their responsibility, because if you feel like you're doing merit increase, I'm gonna say, "Ms. Walker, because of your workshop, I mean, because of your performance evaluation, I have put you at this level, and I have not seen the improvement in this and this that we talked about, and I really appreciate you being here day-to-day, but I, and I believe that the rate that we're paying you is adequate for the job that you're doing. So let's work on that this year, and we're gonna take a look at where you're at next year in your performance, and see if indeed we can get you more money then."
That may work in, in, in some cases, but you have cases, we've seen this in the past, where we give a department merit raise pool, and it all goes to one person, their friend, and everybody else is left out in the cold. So all, that's, that's one of the reasons why we kinda steered away from merit pay back in the, before, prior to this.
But then that, but then that department head has to deal with the uprising from all the other employees, or they start losing-
And I'm seeing the uprising, yeah.
They start losing those employees, and now that department head has to start hiring and training and work five times as hard, because they did a bad job of managing.
But, but in the long term, or the, the real scheme of things, is, is, do we want to see them take money out of one department and put it over in this department just to do that? You know, if that's my friend, I can take my money over here, and my money over here, and take my friend up to the top of the level, you know, not being, you know, not really concerned about the other workers that are, really do increase, you know?
Commissioner, you're expressing one of the age-old problems when it comes to merit increases. I mean, what you're saying is, is, is not new.
Yeah.
And when we were talking about merit raises, I made the, I don't know if I made them in court, I know I've made them to Cherie a couple of times, I'm sure I made it to Jesse, "Hey, doing a 2% across the board, that's the easy way to do it. Everybody gets the same thing, you know, and we're done with it, and no heat on us, other than, man, it should have been 3%, it should have been 4%." But if everybody gets a 2%, nobody has anything to say.
And that's where the, all of this I just described, and what you just said, is where we got to the across-the-board raises, because even, I mean, even Tac kinda warned us against this grade structure kinda thing. It, it, it became a problem, problematic for other counties, you know, in dealing with it. That, that's how we ended up doing this across-the-board thing, is because it was so much of that, what I described, that was going on at the time. It was, the morale was low in certain departments, because that particular head decided to give all the money to that person, but you still want me to do the work, you know?
But that's the, Commissioner, that's the value of having salary grades and having a bottom and a top.
That's, that's one of the values, but you just said a while ago, I just went back to what you said, across the board. That's how we got there, that's all I was describing.
When, when you give out across-the-board raises, though, you're doing the same thing. You have people that are working their butts off, and everybody gets a 2% raise. Well, this person that's been working their butt off says, "Well, why should I do this?" If they're gonna get the same thing I'm gonna get. So it's, if we put the monkey on, if I may say that, on the elected officials, it takes it off us that we're not giving across-the-board raises, and it's their responsibility. It's gonna make them better evaluate their employees, because like the judge said, they're gonna lose, if they, if they don't, if they give all the money to one person, they're gonna lose the other people that'll work for them. Morale will be affected in that department and not overall, as it would be if we give across-the-board raises. And you have people that are really working hard in all departments that are not, that are getting the same thing that people who are, are not putting out 110%. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
No, I, Commissioner, I was just saying, it's a motivation, motivation tool to employees.
It could be a motivation either way. That's what I was saying, it could be a motivation anyway. I could say, "Well, I'm gonna get my hat and get out of here."
Well, money is a, psychologically, money is a false motivator anyway.
Yeah.
Because you give somebody a $500 a month raise, they go, "Man, I get to go buy that new car." And now they go buy that new car, and then their payment ends up being $420 a month, and then their insurance goes up $120 a month, now they're at $540 a month, and golly, now I'm making less, or taking home less than what I had before. So within 90 days, that new car smell's gone.
Toledo, do you, do you recall, just off the top of your head, of anybody that has submitted change forms thus far that has requested greater than a 2% increase?
And not the ones that I've looked at so far, that I only have handled it, but don't have a whole lot.
Do you feel like that across the board, that the elected officials and department heads that are doing the evaluation understand that they can give more than a 2% increase as long as it doesn't break the threshold of the salary scale?
Yes.
Okay.
I think they understand that they can give more or less based on job performance in our departments.
We have a couple of department heads in here. Mr. Walker, how, what's your gut feel?
We hadn't heard that y'all had ever officially approved merit pools.
We hadn't heard that y'all had ever officially approved a merit pool, so, we haven't done evaluations yet. Uh, we done evaluations back in May, but we haven't gone through distributed money. But yes, last time we did merit raises, we gave more than the, the pool amount to some and none to others.
I didn't know we've done merit raises in recent years.
No, for sure, I'm sure, for sure, it's here on behalf of...
I was of the understanding we hadn't given an increase since 2013, that's what I thought.
We did, 15, I want to say.
Okay. All right, so y'all, y'all did give merit raises back then?
Yeah, I, I mean, I understand the process, I just, you know, I had never heard that the court had ever approved that we were actually doing a merit pool. I know y'all talked about it, but, again, the adoption of the budget, I never heard that that was officially adopted.
Chief, your thoughts?
I have a couple, a couple of things I need to address. One, definitely understand the process of the merit raises, but we're structured a little different. We actually have structured pay raise increases, brings the experience and all. So, it actually works best for us to change those, uh, guidelines in our pay scale to percent instead of versus just giving each employee, you know, different merit raises. We did that because on our realm of profession, it's more, more or less, a lot of rank and file, you know, stay competitive. We matched our, our scale, well, we done a scale base similar to what a lot of agencies around us have. Granted, pays are vastly different, and that's where we try to be competitive with. So, we opt to rather just make those changes on our pay scale, pay scale, instead of doing actual merit raises. And I've heard a couple of different things, and I heard, you know, you mentioned that department head or elected official want to give them two percent across the board, and that's fine. I think the issue that we're going to run into, unless there's some, some kind of exemption, is we've done all the evaluations, you know, back in May and stuff. Well, we've had new employees come along, so if we stay with what we've been doing the last few years, even the time when there is a merit raise, we adjust our pay scale accordingly, then some of the new employees that have come in will be left out of that realm because they don't have an evaluation yet. So, we would just like to have an option to adjust our pay scale and put our employees in the correct scale that they're in.
So when you, when you say the option...
We have other mechanisms in place to address forms issues.
And we've always, I think we've treated the sheriffs a lot different because they get out of scale, so we get, anyhow, we get them up.
So is it your request that we just let you take your two percent and put it, a two percent adjustment with all the employees in the sheriff's office?
Yes, yeah, so we, well, we adjust our pay scale, which sometimes adjusts their salaries.
That's what we've always kept in mind, because of that, because of the nature of the sheriffs.
I just want to make sure when we start turning in evaluations, when they're being audited, oh, this employee's new, and they're having evaluations today, I'll give it...
Yeah, we do have a scaled system as well.
Part, part of the reason for going through this entire process is so that evaluations are done on employees. And I guess that's kind of the, the carrot on the end of the stick. If you don't do the evaluations, then the employee's not considered for the increase, but...
We do our evaluations, we get, we get new employees that come into this.
But they're on a scaled system.
We just constantly kind of rotate new employees.
I get it.
Just the other week, we lost a 15-year veteran employee from another agency. And I'm expecting today to get a notification that we're about to lose another employee. Luckily, you know, and we just hired a couple employees that we're running through, two of them, matter of fact, that we're running through training right now. Actually, we have three going through training, and then we just hired one, and then we ended up losing another one, and another two, so... We still, we're maintaining our staff roles, which is great, because time passed, you know, it's been hard, but, you know, we still rotate them out.
Okay. Well, all right, thank you, Chief. Our agenda item number two says to discuss and take action to approve merit raise process for department heads and their employees. John C., I'll ask for your blessing on this. Would it be appropriate for us to get a motion, uh, if the court feels that way, to allow the sheriff's department to just administer a two percent across the board to their sal, to their salary scale?
Sure, that's what you want to do.
Just for that department, though? Would, would there be a motion to that effect?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to allow the sheriff's department to raise their pay scale by two percent.
And I'll second it.
There's a motion before the court on agenda, or portion of agenda item number two by Commissioner Malat, seconded by Commissioner Wobinski, and that is to allow the sheriff's office to just do a two percent across the board for, uh, in, in lieu of merit raises, two percent on their salary structure discussion. Everybody understand okay? Hearing none, discussion, or comments, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, so, Chief, that resolves a number of employees, but it takes care of your department.
Who seconded that motion, I'm sorry?
Uh, it's Commissioner Wobinski. Okay, is, so, Toledo, you've been listening to us. Do you want to lay out step one, step two, step three for all of this to happen, so we're done by October the 6th?
Well, I mean, they just have to get those status change forms, and, to me, so I know who they're wanting to give the raises to, so I can go in and verify that they're not...
Well, our next largest department's going to be Mr. Walker's. Mr. Walker, are you, is your department in a position to make that happen?
We'll make it happen, I have a short notice, but...
Yeah, I think we need to probably have a little better communication about what we, you know, I guess, when we're approving a budget, or at least giving...
The only other option, like you said, is for not, for those that can't get them in, to not start. I went and looked at the policy, I don't see where it states that the raises have to go in effect October 1st.
I made that review myself, but can you make them retro to, uh, October 1st?
No.
No, okay.
There is something on the policy that says you want to do retro pay, that's why I had to come before court.
But when we budgeted, we budgeted from October 1st.
Right, I mean, so the money's there for all year, it's just that if we don't have the authority to...
Yeah, but we, like I said, we just need to make sure we communicate better in the future for all of the departments.
But in fact, we're making them retroactive anyway.
Sir?
But in fact, we're making them retroactive anyway.
Well...
Not payroll, not the payroll. Not on payroll, because payroll's on a two-week period, but everything has to be entered in prior to her opening payroll, so it closes.
Be effective as of...
October 1st.
Today.
It's retroactive.
But she hasn't started the payroll yet. She hasn't started payroll yet.
It's retroactive.
It's not retroactive because it's in a, there's a split pay period.
You're two weeks in the rear.
It's not retroactive.
I have a question, so how does each department know how much money they're going to be able to distribute? Is it in the budget? I can't remember, is there a line item in the merit raises?
Yes.
Okay, so whatever that amount is, is the money that they can distribute, correct?
So, well, with the exception of the ones that report to Commissioners' Court, that's part of the decision you'll be making today, is are you giving the, um, department heads that report to y'all two percent increase? Because we will have to back that portion out of that merit raise line item for those nine departments. The department heads are included in the merit raise, but they can't give themselves...
The elected officials aren't.
The elected officials, right.
Okay.
Did y'all get that answer, that's what I was going to...
No, that has not been discussed.
What answer?
From the department head.
She's saying we put the department head's merit raise in the merit raise line, and we need to move it to the department head, uh, on the people that sit under the court. We need to decide if they get two percent.
Right.
Is there a suggestion from the court?
I suggest they do get two percent.
All department heads across the board?
The ones we evaluated.
Is that in the motion?
Yes. I would like to make the motion that department heads, uh, get two percent merit raise that sit upon the Commissioners' Court.
There's a, another motion before the court on agenda item number two in regards to department heads specifically by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Coxon, that that is, that the department heads that report to Commissioners' Court would receive a two percent merit increase. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? That motion carries. So then that leaves the balance of the employees that report to department heads, and they're entitled up to whatever their manager decides to give them, as long as it stays within the range of the salary grade, and that they've met the other criteria, that would be the evaluation and so forth. Is that correct?
And the budget.
And the budget number, yes, sir. Are they going to, Jesse, are they going to have difficulty in deciphering what? Do they have their merit at two percent, and then it drops down for like the non-exemptor whoever?
So, it's all in one line, so now that I know how to, um, that the nine departments that report to you guys, I will figure their two percent, and I will give those departments the adjusted number.
How quickly are you able to do that?
I will do my best to get it done this afternoon.
That would be awesome, okay.
Or they could just take their salary amount and times about a two percent, and, no.
So how do we best notify, because not all the department heads are here, so, although, Chief Green, you're done.
You're, you're only really, I mean, there's two...
Some are, like, Greg is going to be easy, Al's going to be easy.
Yeah, you have CDC, that's a one office, one-person office, EMC is a one-person office, so really it would be Kat, Roden Bridge, Fairgrounds is two people, that wouldn't be difficult, and HR, IT, and voters. I mean, it's, you only have two that are really going to...
Okay, so we're going to put the burden on you, Mr. Walker, and Kat.
Are they, um, I don't know if he's choosing, but I know in the past, um, there have been times where they have given up a portion of theirs to give an employee more. Is that an option if it is brought to us?
I prefer it not, really. That's just my comment, though. Do you understand what she's asking? Everybody, what is your preference on that?
I mean, they've done it in the past, where they had an employee they felt like warranted more money than what they received, uh, from either the cost of living or the, since we had merit raise. They give up, you know, a portion of their merit to that, or a cost of living to that person. I think, to me, it should be up to the department head or, or, or elect, I know, department head, if they want to give up some of their money, you know?
Okay. I, I disagree, and the reason I disagree, I think it's the county's responsibility to pay our employees, not the department heads to pay their employees. And if we're giving department heads a certain amount of money, like we just did, it's because we feel they're deserving of that money, and, um, that's my comment.
Yeah, I think they're deserving, but I, like I said, if, if, we essentially are giving them the pool, if they want to take some of their pool, we authorize them to give themselves two percent. If they want to back off on that, I, you know...
I've got my Scrooge hat on today, y'all, y'all have your Santa Claus hats on today, that's okay. I'm just, I'm just sharing my thoughts, I appreciate your thoughts. Commissioner Wobinski, you have any?
I, I feel the same way, uh, if they want to give it, uh, uh, you know, that's fine with me.
Commissioner Cox, you have a thought?
Uh, it's their money, I can, I don't have a problem.
So it's the decision then of the court that if a department head wants to take some of their portion and put it back into their pool, there, it's okay to do that, all right? Does that complicate anything from, uh, the accounting process, Jesse?
No, I'll figure it based upon the two percent, and then, um, hold on a sec. And you will fill out the cha, you will, they'll fill out the change of status, and you will sign it for them as far as giving their merit raise?
Uh, I'm okay to do that.
Okay.
And, and Mr. Walker, uh, if you don't use all of your pool, then I wasn't considered for an increase this year, and I feel like I've done an outstanding job most of the year, so...
I was going to mention that, too. Thank you, thank you. Oh, my bad for you, oh, my bad, yeah, all right.
If you comply with the policy and have a review...
I get that every four years.
Every four years.
And I find out that's often enough. Is there anything else, anybody, in particular Commissioners or auditors or HR would like to discuss? Do we feel like we understand the process and we're able to move forward?
Okay, I mean, I can work with Jesse and Vanessa on what was discussed and sent out by department via email, where the elected officials and department heads telling the process that was discussed, but the court wants...
That would be great. Is Herrera on board?
Yeah.
Is she here?
Yes.
Go out your whip and put her to work. If there is no other business to be handled, I will move to agenda...
I just reserve, do we need to clarify about what, uh, department head over multiple departments, the two percent, need to stay in the department, or, uh, that we, I know you suggested it go either way, but I think it should stay per department.
I thought the conversation ended up where it stays within the department. Is that the acceptance of the court?
I, I would think that it would stay within that department.
Do we want to make a motion on that? Or just have an understanding? We've, we've budgeted within the department, stays within the department.
Probably a motion, yeah.
Okay. Then with that, I'm going to go to agenda item number three, motion to adjourn, is there one?
I move re-adjourn.
Second. Before us on agenda item three, we have a motion by Commissioner Wobinski, seconded by Commissioner Malat, is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Commissioners, thank you.